Welcome to South St. Paul City Hall and the Monday, March 22, 2021 meeting of the South St. Paul School Board. Lisa, can you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Present.
Inspector Lala Burdi.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
And Inspector Erin Dandias are temporarily not here, and Chair Walker.
Here.
So we've got five present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, well, welcome again. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda and minutes, and that includes the school board meeting agenda for tonight, March 22, 2021, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes from March 8, 2021, and the school board meeting minutes from March 8, 2021. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And then a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? The motion passes and the agenda and minutes are approved. Well, as always, the quality in action tonight is going to be the highlight of the meeting, so I wanted to jump right into that and invite Dr. Webb to introduce our guests.
Thanks, Chair Walker. Tonight, we are joined by a wonderful new crew that's started up this year at Lincoln Center. It's our Deaf and Hard of Hearing program for our students, and we partner with 917, our intermediate school district, to offer this program here at Lincoln Center. We have our Director of Special Education, who's going to come up and do the introductions, Kelly Tetrick. And Kelly, if you want to start making your way up, I didn't see you back there with the mask on, so please welcome Kelly Tetrick.
Yes.
Hi, Kelly.
Well, thank you Superintendent Webb, Board Chair Walker, members of the board, and members of our South St. Paul community out there watching this evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. As Director of Special Education and Special Services for the district, I am honored and pleased to be introducing you to an amazing group of educators this evening. That is our group here from Intermediate 917. For those of you who are not familiar with Intermediate 917, it is a district that provides specialized programming and services to member districts throughout Dakota County, also including the Bloomington District, which is out of Dakota County. South St. Paul is a member of Intermediate District 917. We do access their services. Some of their services actually happen in facilities that 917 has within Dakota County. You may be familiar with Concord Education Center, which is in Inver Grove Heights. That is a facility of 917. They also provide services at member districts, like the DHH program, which is housed at Lincoln Center Elementary, the pre-K and the elementary program there. And they also provide us with itinerant services. So students who are in need of specialized services can receive those services from Intermediate District 917 staff that do come into district buildings and travel throughout other districts as well. So another little background, and I don't want to give anything away, because I want these wonderful folks to actually talk about their program, more so than me talking about it. This partnership really started probably a couple of years ago, where Executive Director of Special Programs, Melissa Shaler, who is in the back here, is a close colleague of mine, and we got talking about that they needed a new home for the Deaf Heart of Hearing program, which had previously been in the Burnsville District for, I believe, over 40 years. Various reasons, they needed to find a new home, so she and I had conversation, is this possible? I then went to Dr. Webb, our Finance Director, Erin Buschberger, we had conversation with Mr. Fugazi at Lincoln Center, and really determined that, yes, we would be very interested in partnering and offering this opportunity to have this wonderful program here in our district, for our kids to benefit from and from all of our staff to benefit from as well. That kind of led to moving forward with the programming. So fast forward to last summer, right in the middle of COVID, we assisted 917 in moving all of their things in from the past 40 years into Lincoln Center. So kudos out to our tech department, all of a lot of folks that helped with that move last summer. And that brings us to today, where they started with us in the fall, they've been with us, and we hope to have them here for many, many years to come. We all benefit from this programming. It is a wonderful program, and I want to turn it over. Actually, I'm going to ask the team to come up, and I am very pleased to introduce you, first of all, to Taylor Thomas, who is the Dean of the DHH Resource Program at Lincoln Center. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Taylor, to introduce your staff.
Okay, I'll come up here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today to talk a little bit about our Deaf Heart of Hearing Resource Program. This is such an exciting opportunity for us. So first, as Kelly said, our program has been, it had been in Burnsville for over 40 years, and we are so excited for this opportunity. Due to some shifts, we moved into Lincoln Center, and we are one of less than five Deaf Heart of Hearing Resource Programs in the state of Minnesota. So it is a wonderful opportunity that we're able to keep this going. So I would like to introduce the staff that I have brought with us here today. So first, we have Shelby Nero. She is one of our Deaf and Hard of Hearing teachers and teaches in the three to five grade range. We have Sarah Idene, and she teaches our kindergarten, kindergarten students up until about third grade, depending on how caseloads shift. And then we have Heather Stays here, who is one of our speech-language pathologists who works with students across our programming, including our middle school and high school programming. So within Lincoln Center, as Kelly had mentioned, we have a number of different classrooms. I wanted to give you guys a little overview and breakdown of what that looks like. So right now, in Lincoln Center, we have four classrooms. We have a preschool, pre-K program that houses one teacher of the Deaf Heart of Hearing, a speech-language pathologist, and classroom assistants. And then we have two elementary-level program, resource programs, which houses our Deaf and Hard of Hearing teachers and speech-language pathologists. But you'll notice that we come with a lot of different staff members. We have transliterators, interpreters, classroom assistants, and deaf-blind interveners. And then we also have a special classroom within our program that is specifically geared towards students who are deaf-blind. And we have a number of deaf-blind interveners that support those learners throughout their day at Lincoln Center. And as you can see below, we also come with a number of other related service providers that come in and out of the building on itinerant services to support the learners in our program. So overall, our program philosophy is being able to provide constant and deliberate exposure to the representation of language to develop the linguistic foundations necessary for lifelong learning. So this includes increasing proficiency in written and spoken English, which is critical to develop literacy, academic achievement, and access to the hearing community. Proficiency in American Sign Language is also critical to accessing the deaf community and understanding deaf culture. And Deaf and Hard of Hearing children also benefit from the visual representation of spoken language. So this is accomplished through the system known as cue'd speech. So we're going to go into a little more in-depth about all of these things, just to give you a little background on what they are. But first, we have a little hands-on experience for you to represent what it's like to be an individual with a hearing loss. And Heather's going to take over for this part.
Hands-on, ears-on, whichever way you want to think about it. Our biggest, our biggest job is to provide access for our students who are deaf and hard of hearing. The deaf and hard of hearing disability area is unique in that if they are provided with proper access, we can catch them up. So that's the whole idea behind it. So we thought we'd give you a chance to experience a spelling test without access. Feel free to look at your neighbor's paper, if you have a little scrap paper, or if you want to just do this in your head, it doesn't matter. It's only going to be five, five words, so this, this won't be difficult at all. So, is everyone ready? All right. Word number one.
Word number one.
It's not coming through the overhead. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll provide some access.
Word number one.
Did you hear that?
Word number one.
Word number two?
Word number two.
Number three?
Word number three.
Number four?
Word number four.
The last one?
Word number five.
Okay. So that's, that's a hearing loss, really, that is not uncommon for our students. Obviously, that's an uncorrected hearing loss, but that's not uncommon for our students. I want you to think about the energy that it took to take that test. Well, let me give you the answers here. So you can see how you can talk to your neighbor and just, you know, feel free to brag. Number one was shoe, number two was tree, number three was math, number four was desk, and number five was snack. This is where you're going to go, yeah, right. You'll have to trust us on this one. But I would, I would imagine you had one of two responses to this test. One was, if you're competitive like me, you're like, I'm going to get one, I'm at least going to get a vowel, you know? And I could see it's going to be really, really wanted to get part of it right, right? And some of you were like, forget it, this is not fair, no one could get this, you know, and you kind of had that give-up mentality. And I think we need to keep that in mind. I think it's kind of a mirror to how a lot of our students, no matter what they're dealing with in school, can, can act and react in situations like this that can be very frustrating. And again, think about that, the energy that it took for those five words, and imagine doing that all day, every day, not just for a couple of minutes. Which brings me to another slide. Oftentimes, one of the reasons that we are so, so insistent on complete access, or as much access as we can, we do give some students a test. And so if they're using like their FM system, which allows them to hear better from a distance, and let's say that they can hear 80% of what is being said with their, with their FM system, oftentimes, we think, oh, that's not so bad, they're, they're only missing 20%, right? Well, this was a representation of only missing 20%. I took a script from a third grad, third grade morning meeting, and I overlaid a puzzle piece on it, and I, a puzzle, and I just took out 20% of the pieces. And you, take this later, and I want you to try to read this, and, and try to read, and you have to guess what's behind the, think about the energy that you are expending, filling in these gaps. And this is for someone, those of us who have internalized language. We can make really good guesses as to what they may or may not have been saying. So even though it's only 20%, it can have a very large impact on our students.
Shelby and Sarah?
Hello. Hi, Shelby Nero here, one of the teachers at the Deaf Heart of Hearing. So communication, of course, is a big thing in our program. And at Lincoln Center, we support learners that are deaf, hard of hearing, deaf-blind, there's a whole, you know, spectrum of these hearing loss. And we have what's called a bilingual, bicultural approach to our program here, where we have two languages. We support American Sign Language, or ASL, and we also support English. And with the bicultural, we support, you know, the students having access to deaf culture, but also their family culture, or the hearing culture. So we have two languages, American Sign Language and cue'd speech. But I'll let you get into the cue'd speech in just a second. So with American Sign Language, it's a visual mode of communication. It's not universal, every language had their own form of sign language. And then cue'd speech?
So cue'd speech is a unique visual communication system. It's based on the phonetics of language. So it's a consonant-vowel visual representation of any language that you want to represent. This year has been interesting for us because our students participate in Spanish class. We have a cue'd language transliterator who goes into class, and she is able to cue all of the sounds of Spanish, so that our kids are accessing it visually, just as hearing kids are accessing it through their ears. And we will give a little visual representation of how American Sign Language and cue'd speech look different. So we have a little sentence that we're going to show you. The sentence is, "The cat ran up the tree." So if I was going to cue that sentence, I would say, "The cat ran up the tree." And then in sign language, it would be? So through cue'd speech, we're able to show all of the elements of English. Through American Sign Language, we're able to give the kids another language in which they can communicate, and another culture which they can be part of.
Can you show us "The cat ran up the tree" one more time for us, just watching the two?
Sure. Yep. So in cue'd speech, "The cat ran up the tree."
Thank you.
And it wouldn't be a good presentation from us if we didn't include some cuteness. This, are, these are just a few photos of our students at Lincoln Center accessing the building. We have, in our first photo here, the students learning their civic duties on the National Voting Election Day, casting their votes in the classroom.
For the farmer or the duck, right?
Correct, yes. Farmer or the duck?
It was a pretty tight race. We had to count a few.
Maybe some double voting on a few of those. And then just a few, a few of our other learners. And one thing that we've especially enjoyed while we've been in, at Lincoln Center is your beautiful motor gym, which has been very, very helpful for our students in, with their sensory regulation needs.
That's great.
So, and while we've been here, we've been able to participate and collaborate and do some inclusion activities with the other individuals at Lincoln Center. So first, our students participate in their general education classes for a variety of different subjects based on student need, including specialist, recess, and lunch during distance learning and our hybrid learners. And then we've also been able to do a, some collaboration on professional development. We recently provided a similar presentation to the Lincoln Center staff, where we were able to simulate some of the hearing losses and give them a fuller in-depth background into our communication modes, as well as some deaf culture, and how to interact with the Deaf and Hard of Hearing students and Deaf and Hard of Hearing staff we have in the building. We also recently began our collaborative efforts with the media specialists and some others in the building to help create the video morning announcements in an accessible format. So the staff at Lincoln Center approached me on how we can make that a collaborative effort to include an ASL word of the week. Since it's a PYP school, we will be including that to have the students in the building beginning to learn sign language and expand their own vocabulary to be able to communicate with the other students in the building. We will also be ensuring that it has an ASL translation, the morning announcements, acute English translation, as well as closed captioning, so that everybody in the building has access, including those learners who benefit from closed captioning that may not be deaf and hard of hearing. And then we've also been collaborating with some other building staff on some complex students, and students with high language needs. And I know Heather has recently worked with one of the speech-language pathologists in the building to help provide some feedback and professional support to her. And then staff have also been reaching out and seeking resources from our team on increasing ASL and beginning how to teach their students in their classroom American Sign Language. So overall, it's been a great collaborative effort, and we are really looking forward to continuing that into the next school year. And we thought it might be fun to teach you guys a little bit of sign language before we go. So if you would like to invite Shelby up?
What do you want to say?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't know if you can see my hands well, but for "Good morning," you have two hands, and that's good. So good. And then "Morning." Think about the sun rising. So good morning. Nice work. And "please," just making a circular motion here. And then, do I? And the last one is "thank you." Thank you. So thank you. Thank you again for having us here today.
We oftentimes have a few questions from board members. Board members?
I'd like to jump in with a couple of questions. Number one, if we have students that are hard of hearing in other buildings in our district, are they, is your program accessible to them?
So within South St. Paul, we do have students who are deaf and hard of hearing in other buildings, and those students are served on an itinerant basis. And our program is something that would be an IEP team decision based on student need. So in terms of language access, communication, academic needs, or socially-emotional needs, it would be an IEP team decision to be able to join our resource program.
And my second question is, for the people who refuse to learn sign language, or ASL, do you have any services for lip reading?
For lip reading?
Yes.
That would be accessed through cue'd speech at the same time.
It happens at the same time as cue'd speech, because you can't do cue'd speech without the mouth, because this hand shape can be M, F, and T. So you need the lips to go with it.
Thank you.
That's a good tip.
So the kids that are there, where are they coming from?
So right now, we have learners coming from a variety of Dakota County schools. Oh, sorry. Come up to the microphone. I'll come up to the microphone. So a number of our students come from districts across Dakota County. We have students from West St. Paul, we have students from Inver Grove Heights, Prior Lake. We have a few students that are in our program from Bloomington, just given some of the school districts in the outer metro don't have access to a close resource program to meet the needs of their students, so they are involved in our resource program.
My question was a little similar about enrollment. You know, I know that the COVID year was, who can, who could predict that? So I'm sure enrollment was down anyways, but with the move from Burnsville here, are you expecting lower numbers?
Actually, this school year, a number of our students that are in our resource program come from the more of the northern Dakota County districts. We do have some students that are coming from Lakeville, Farmington, and Hastings. So we have students coming from all over Dakota County areas in our program.
You mentioned that there were five programs like this in the state. Where are those other four?
So the other four, we have, they have an elementary resource program in 287, Intermediate District 287. St. Paul continues to have some levels of resource programs. 916 currently only has a preschool program. They do not have an elementary program. And then there are two other programs that are at Metro Deaf School, which is a charter school, and then the Minnesota State Academies for the Deaf.
That's amazing.
Very impressive.
Yes.
Thank you for the work that you're doing.
Oh, absolutely.
Fantastic.
Thank you for letting us be a part of your community.
Now, what really jumped out to me was, in addition to the amazing work you're doing, is how you've kind of integrated into the programming at Lincoln Center. Is that typical of these programs, where they get into a school and use all of the resources that are available in the school? Or how did that come about?
It depends on the setting of the program. So right now, our students, based on their IEPs, are setting two or three. So those are programs that are within a public school. So that's how we came about to being in this program. We do have, in 917, other settings of programs, like Kelly had mentioned before, like Concord Education Center, which would be a setting four program.
I'm glad from, from both sides that you're able to use each other's resources and work together.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say what a warm welcome we've gotten since being at Lincoln Center. You know, we were, some of us have had the pleasure of being at a school for, in Burnsville, for, the program was there for 40 years. Many of us were there for multiple years beyond that. And to come to a new school, we weren't sure what to expect. We have been welcomed with very open arms, and we sincerely appreciate this opportunity. It's been incredible.
Nice.
Great.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you for sharing that.
Give him one more round of applause.
That would have been good. One last little piece, two?
The way, the way deaf people applaud, speaking of deaf culture, the way deaf people applaud, this means nothing, obviously, right? Well, I mean, it's from your heart, so it means something. Don't misunderstand. But the way deaf people applaud is shake your hands, because it's visually as busy as this is loud. So deaf applause.
Have a good night.
Well, thank you again. Thank you again.
Just a little addition. Since I am fortunate, and lucky, and honored, and privileged to be the South St. Paul representative to Intermediate District 917, I've been on the board for five, for five years now, it is my honor and pleasure to introduce Dr. Melissa Shaler. She is our Director of Special Education at 917. She does an absolutely phenomenal job. I'm going to let her say a few words. And I had asked her to mention to us other South St. Paul students that participate in 917 activities and, and schooling. Thank you.
Welcome, Melissa.
Chair Walker, members of this board, thank you for having us here today. My intent was just to come and see the presentation and sit quietly in the back, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I've been in the district in 917 for, I think, I'm concluding my 13th year there. And so I will say, there was some reluctance for us to move our Deaf and Hard of Hearing program because of how long we'd been in Burnsville. But it was really time for change for us. And, and our, our membership has really evolved, and, and I think it was also the partnership that we have with Inver Grove Heights in making this move. We do have a middle school and high school program that is located in Inver Grove Heights that functions in much the same way that our preschool and elementary does. So you aren't large enough to hold us all, so we appreciated having another district close by that could accommodate that other component of our program. And as they've mentioned, we do offer a number of programs. We serve about roughly 550 students in setting four programs in our district, as well as our setting three programs. So you all have people, students that may attend in any one of our setting four programs. We have four. So Concord is our newest in Inver Grove. We also have Cedar School in Burnsville, Alliance Education Center in Rosemont, and then Lebanon Education Center, which I believe that's officially Apple Valley there, in addition to some other programming we offer for students on the autism spectrum and our students who are multiply impaired in our member district building. So thanks for having us here tonight. Thanks to the team for their awesome job presenting, and we really appreciate having South St. Paul as a, as a member district of 917.
Thanks for coming.
Quick learners.
We must remember that now. Well, very good. Thanks again for, for coming in and sharing all that with us. That was, that was fun and very, very good to know all of that and know that that's going on in our schools. So on to the, the regular. that that's going on in our schools. So on to the, the regular meeting portion now. The public listening session is the next item on the agenda, and there were no, no submissions of questions or comments to the board. I will again remind everyone that if you want to communicate with the board, there's several ways to do it. There's a protocol out on the school website where you can send a message to us, and we will respond to you and then report on it at the, the next meeting. You can also email all of us, or certainly pick up the phone and call any one of us. All of our email addresses and phone numbers are out on the website as well. So we encourage you to contact us. We'd like to know what you're thinking, so don't be shy. And we'll move from that to Superintendent Webb providing the highlights from around the district. Dr. Webb?
Thanks, Chair Walker. Board members, we have just a few wonderful graphics tonight as I'm going to tick through our superintendent update for March 22nd. We are excited to have our secondary students back in action. We have grades six through 12, with students coming in in our hybrid mode. And once we return from spring break, we'll be full in person here in just another couple of weeks. So it's just exciting to see the students again. They're excited to be back. The teachers are doing an incredible job in supporting not only students in person, but students online simultaneously. So we know that teaching online is hard, and teaching online and in person at the same time is an added challenge. So hats off to all of our staff. Chuck Huchaki, I think, just stepped out for a second, but Chuck and Lee, our building leaders, have been doing an outstanding job with all the coordination and facilitation and support. We're giving a lot of voice to teacher leaders in the building to help design our schedules and our programs and our offerings. So just a lot to celebrate there. We do have a change in our meal distribution plan. We are going to look at our pickup at the secondaries, at the secondary building, from 11:00 to 1:00 or 3:30 to 5:30. And we're going to provide five meals in that pickup package, breakfast and lunch each week. So again, if you are a family in need of those, that offering, and for our distance learner families as well, feel free to take advantage of that. Our next free food giveaway is on Thursday, March 25th at 2:00 PM until the boxes run out. They're 30-pound food boxes, open to everyone. And it's a drive-through. The UFCW Local 1189 is offering this at 22, I'm sorry, 266 Hardman Avenue North. 266 Hardman Avenue North. We have COVID testing for students and families. So it says the Minnesota Department of Health is recommending testing every two weeks. Our staff have been doing that. We're now recommending it as well for students through the end of the school year. This works a little bit different and is actually even more convenient than earlier. The students or families can order the tests through Vault Health. They can go online and order their test. The students complete the test at home. They seal their sample into a shipping bag, and then they get their test results. They return their student test to school for shipping and get their results emailed back to them. So it's pretty slick. If you have questions about that as a family member, you can reach out to our COVID coordinator, Shawnee Kruger, at skruger@sspps.org. We continue to have advocacy, advocacy at the Capitol. It just looks different these days. Many of the meetings at the Capitol are all virtual. Our advocacy at the Capitol is virtual. Here's our early learning families meeting with legislators digitally this year. This was my favorite slide of all. So, so there's a lot of gray hair in this audience, I'll say that. It's 100 days of kindergarten, and on the 100th day, they said, "Let's dress up as if we're 100 years old." And so I think they had a lot of help from the home front before they came to kindergarten that day. But what a great shot of our 100-year-old kindergarteners.
So cute.
One of our PYP units of inquiry is Sharing the Planet. Our Capoja second graders got to experience kind of their spring planting. I don't know if you remember back in your second grade class, but I got to make my, plant my project, and I think it was a milk carton at the time with some dirt and a watermelon seed or something. But it's still happening, and again, under the IB lens of Sharing the Planet. We have a number of upcoming calendar events. We have a spring break coming up, so for the week of March 29th, no school district-wide. We do have March 31st. Again, reminder, no meal distribution while we're on spring break. That'll resume the following week, and again, that Wednesday with the two time slots. We have transition days on April 5th and 6th for grades six through 12. April 7th, we'll start distance learning again, a connection day, and then all students are back at the secondary for our four days a week in person on April 8th. So, back to you, Chair Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Next on the agenda is the consent items, including the financial claims, bills payable, and the staffing. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then that passes, and the consent agenda is approved. We have no policy reviews coming forward. Two business items. The first is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the revised substitute rates for the 2020-21 school year. All right.
So I can give you just a minute of background on this, if you want. You can do first and second.
Sure.
So first, if you'd like, but.
Please do.
We have, in the pandemic, we have fewer subs in the pool of subs in the area. So South St. Paul schools, as long, as well as other schools in our area, have increased sub rates to the same level that districts around us. So we're trying to attract more subs that want to come into the building again during the pandemic, which has been a challenge. So we're increasing that rate to attract more candidates, and that's what the proposal is for tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Especially since I think I caught you off-guard, and that was off the top of your head. Nicely done. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes, and the substitute rates are approved.
Chair Walker, can you repeat the first and second motion on that one, please?
Repeat them?
For one.
Could we not?
So moved in a second.
We need to vote on B?
A motion and a second.
I need a, I need a first and a second on.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the revised substitute rates?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, very good. And any discussion at this point? We should probably revote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it passes. Sorry, my apologies for that. I skipped over the, perhaps the important part. The next item is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the extension of the timeline for the partnership notification. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
You want me to give a quick overview?
If you would.
Yep. So we have a partnership with the city regarding Central Square. This is a month-long extension in our conversation and partnership timeline and deadline. So we are recommending adding an additional month to that timeline.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion?
When does the month start and stop?
So you have to backwards map from about July 1st. So the current language says 90 days, which is about March 1st. And so we're recommending moving this to April 1st. I'm sorry. It, actually, 90 days is March, April 1st, and we're looking to May 1st. Had to do my quick 60-day math there.
Good. Any other discussion?
I just want to express that we address this with a level of urgency, as I'm worried about the financial impacts on the district.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just the opposite, John. I don't see a sense of urgency, because when I was at the meeting, I heard three different council members say that they didn't feel an urgency, and another person told me, which made a quorum for the city council, that they didn't feel an urgency. And I think we should respect their feelings also. So it may cost a dollar here or there, but I think in the long run, you know, we make up for what we spent with some pretty good public relations.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? All right, I don't hear anyone else, so all in favor, please say aye.
Could we do a roll call, Chris? Could we call for a vote?
I honestly don't know the protocol there. Is that?
Not a resolution.
Yeah, it's, it's, what are we voting on, Bill?
We're voting on the partnership to end May 1st?
No, we're calling.
To extend.
Extend it.
Extend the conversation going another additional month rather than cutting it short.
Okay.
We want to give more time, not less.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you all for that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Then motion passes, and the extension of the timeline is approved. That's the end of the business agenda. We'll move on to the informational items. We'll start with the board members' reports and committee updates. And where have you seen a passion? And we'll start off to my right with Bill. Inspector Aaron, do you have any reports or committee updates?
I do. I want to give a shout out to the girls' hockey program and their coach, as well as the wrestling program and the basketball program for the, not only the success they've had, but the impressive way that they have conducted themselves on the court. You know, sports aren't just about winning or losing. They're about life learning. And these coaches have done an exceptional job. So a shout out to all three, and congratulations on your success.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Monica?
None for me today.
All right. And Linda?
None.
Okay. Move to the other side with Wendy.
I also just want to put a shout out and a congratulation to some of our winter sports athletes that will be competing in, in state competition. We have 11 members of our boys' wrestling team that have qualified for state competition. We have a swimmer, Stephen Ikins, who will be representing the South St. Paul in the, in the swim meet, and also a gymnast, Elise Boudreau. Want to put a shout out to having our, having a gymnast attending the competition also. And I just want to wish everybody a safe, enjoyable, relaxing, safe again. Spring break coming up. Spend time together. Please be safe, be protective, and we, we will welcome you back in April to finish out the school year. So thank you.
Wendy, I want to just move in and say that the 11 that did qualify are out of 14 possible. So they did pretty well, you know, percentage-wise. And, and that's pretty impressive.
Indeed. Well, thank you, Wendy. John?
Just want to give a shout out to the secondary teachers. Watching all of the middle school and high school students starting to return to classroom experiences has been great, and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into making that happen.
Very good. Thank you, John. And Nikki?
I'd like to read something. In 20 years' time, people will not ask the children of 2020 if they caught up with their studies. They will not ask them what grades they made despite the year off school. They'll ask them with wonder, "What was it like?" They will ask them, "How did you cope? How did you feel? What do you remember of those days?" They will listen in awe to the tales of clapping on doorsteps for medical workers. They will sit open-mouthed to hear of daily walks being the only life we saw, and how much we missed human contact and gatherings. They will be amazed to know about empty supermarkets, online concerts, birthdays spent on a screen, and a life lived inside. They will listen and sit back with amazement and say, "Wow, you went through so much." So think about what you would like your children to take away from this whole year. Tell them that they are not behind. Tell them they are not missing out. Tell them they are extremely special indeed, and they will be forever made stronger by this unique time. Tell them catching up is not even a thing, because they have grown up so much in many other ways. Remind them of the fun stuff they did with their families, that feeling of safety and togetherness amidst the chaos. Let them take that thought with them through life. Change the narrative now, and it will travel far. Tell the children that they are not behind, but that they are special.
Thanks, Nikki.
Great.
Very nice. Very nice. All right. Well, that is the end of the agenda. We do have a closed session tonight for a couple of topics. The first is a negotiations update, and the second is to consider and develop offers for the purchase of real property pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C, with the properties in question identified by tax parcel 367030019010, known as the Central Square Community Center. So do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Then that passes, and the meeting is closed.